Test, test, test.
All right, at this time, please silent your cell phone. Be advised these proceedings are being recorded for those physically present in the council chambers who desire to address the city council during the meeting. Please complete the request to speak form available at the front entrance of the council chamber and present it to the city clerk speakers physically present it. The participating in V I E Zoom will be called upon at an appropriate time and each person will be allowed three minutes of speaking time. We're going to convene the regular city council meeting at 6:12 PM on May 9, 2023, on Tuesday. Councilmember Jeff Allen has asked that tonight's city council meeting be adjourned in memory of Grand Terrace resident Ann Wade Hornsby. Councilmember Allen, would you like to emphasize about Ann?
Sure, it'd be an honor. So, we're going to, we're going to close the meeting tonight in memoriam of longtime Grand Terrace resident Ann Wade Hornsby. She was a scholar and a longtime schoolteacher and educator. And she was at various schools through Riverside and Colton and San Bernardino. And she was involved in the community a lot. Some of you longtime residents might remember she was one of the originators of Petition Drive to get our Grand Terrace Dog Park started, excuse me. And so, and she was involved in a lot of different other community drives and efforts. So, we're going to remember Ann tonight in her honor and wish her family peace and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. We pray for Ann's family for their comfort in this time of sorrow, but thank you, Councilman Allen. So invocation will be given by Pastor Mark Matthews from Grandview Baptist Church, and I'll be leading, a pleasure leading. So can we please stand? And Pastor Mark, can you come to the podium? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Father, we do lift up Ann's family this evening. Pray that you would comfort them through the power of your Spirit. Pray that you'll bless that family and may the memorial service and the time of gathering with family and friends be a time of rejoicing as they celebrate her life. We mourn her loss, of course, but Lord, we are grateful for all that she did for this city and so grateful that she was a part of it here. And now, Lord, I want to lift up our mayor and council members. I pray for Mr. Henderson, Ms. Robles, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Allen, that you would be with them and guide them as they work with our mayor, Mayor Hussey. Pray for him as well, Lord, that you would grant them wisdom as they work through the particulars of our city. We are commanded to lift up our leaders in prayer on a regular basis, and so that's why we do that this evening. And then all the support staff and all the people that do work for the city, I lift them up as well. I just pray that you would guard and protect them, give them many, many blessings that obviously would flow from you. And we're so grateful for them. You have put them in these places of authority by your authority, and we now submit to them and desire to work with them for the betterment of our community and our city in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Mark. So A B 2449 disclosure announcement if there's any member of the legislative body participating remotely or just cause of emergency circumstances? No? M C clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Present.
Councilmember Henderson?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Hussey?
Present.
Councilmember Rodriguez Robles is absent. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. So item A, reordering of additional or removal items from the agenda. Do we have any?
No additions or deletions.
Thank you. So item B, press, special presentation. The City of Grand Terrace Chamber of Commerce, Claudia Cooley, Chamber President. Ms. Cooley, can you come to the podium? And you're doing a presentation? You forgot why you were here? Well, everybody's here to hear you. They're not here to hear me, so I can see that right now.
I was going to see how I could get down those steps without a rail, anyway.
Well, the floors.
If I have a handout, do I turn it into, it's like the brochure for the, what's going on?
The floor is all yours for 30 seconds.
30 seconds? Okay, here we go.
It's all yours.
Here we go. Here we go.
It's for you.
Anyway, this, I'm Claudia Cooley, and I want to thank you for having us. We're here celebrating the brand new chamber, the Grand Terrace Chamber, and we're celebrating that. Woo-hoo! I brought my cheering, my cheering group. And also, I want to thank each of you. I want to thank the, thank the mayor, Mayor Hussey, and I want to thank the Mayor Pro Tim and members of the city council and citizens that are here. Thank you for being here. I'm Claudia Cooley, and I'm just going to tell you a quick little story. I grew up here where the Bank of America is. I had a different closet. Mine didn't have money in it, but I grew up there. And so I grew up across the street from where Woody's Restaurant is or Grill is, and that was a walnut grove back then. The Oberschmitz owned it. And I had my first little business there. I went across the street and dragged a little gunny sack, picked up walnuts, and I had already gone out in the neighborhood and taken orders. But I found that it wasn't much fun to do it by myself, so I enlisted my two friends next door, and we did it together for a couple of years, actually, and we built our little bank accounts. So I know the importance of working together as you're building a business, so that's why I feel so passionate about the, the chamber starting back up again. Anyway, so that's why we're here, to talk about that, to celebrate that. And let me tell you a little bit about the history. The chamber closed down, from what I understand, in 2018. It had been opened up, I know originally in the 1980s, went through the 90s, and it has had times that it went down. And so I was asked by one of the residents here why we didn't have a chamber, and we talked about it. And I said, I'm a business builder, maybe I can help bring it back. And so in September, I decided to invite many of the community, business community, to Woody's Grill for coffee and to see if there was an interest in bringing the chamber back. And obviously, I mean, this is just a small portion, but we had a lot of enthusiasm and a lot of people that were very positive about it. So in that collaboration, we have kicked into gear. And what I've learned is a strong chamber indicates a positive business environment. And so that's what we want to do here for Grand Terrace. I love Grand Terrace. I went through all that school, eight years through that little school down there. Actually, there was no kindergarten at the time. That's why I don't have any social graces, but I will learn them still before I'm gone, I think. Anyway, we're about exploring what, you know, how we can support new businesses and also fulfill and fuel the businesses that have been here. So that's what we've been up to and what we are hoping to do. We want to help the community thrive, the business community, as well as the people that are served by the businesses here. So that's what we're up to. We started with a vision. Like I said, I brought people together. They were excited. Then we formed what we call the Navigators Group, which is our workabees, and we came together and found out that we needed to kind of clean up some of the things from the past. And so my philosophy is we did that while we're building the future. So we're looking both ways. We're building the plane while we're flying it. You've heard that. Hopefully, we're pretty good at flying a plane that's being built. But anyway, we're doing great. I mean, we've only been going a few months, and we already have our bylaws. We have our, our membership paper, our brochure, which you guys have all been so supportive and had that printed for us. Thank you, Deborah. Anyway, so that's been going on. We've had, oh, our mission state, I have to read to you our mission statement because I think it's pretty cool. The Grand Terrace Area Chamber of Commerce is pleased to extend you an invitation to become a member of this dynamic organization. Our mission, building business success and a strong community together. It's about being together because I believe together is better. Anyway, our vision is to be innovative, trusted, and respected business advocates that drive both economic and social prosperity and support to our members in our local community. And our values, important. Integrity, communication, collaboration, professionalism, education, innovation, leadership, and reverence. And then we believe the success of our community here in Grand Terrace, which we all love, is based on the strength of the vibrant businesses we serve. We are here to serve businesses who believe in our mission, values, and vision for the future. As we grow together, we will continue to make Grand Terrace area a stronger community. And I do know, because I've been a business builder for four decades, I do understand that the importance of bringing businesses in, normally they're looking to see if there's a chamber. And that, and that was what struck my attention or caught my attention in the beginning. Somebody said that wants to come into our city with a business, where's the chamber? So I started asking, where is the chamber? I used to write for the magazine. I didn't, wasn't asked to write anymore. I didn't know what happened to it. But anyway, I was told what had happened, and so in investigating, I realized checking with all the other chambers, which I have spoke at many over California, they always have a paid director manager. And I realized that was a missing piece. So I said, if I'm going to step in and help, we have to work toward that position because we don't want to fail again. It's gone down four times. We don't want that. We want to be sustainable, and we also want to be a support to the community. So that's what we're up to. Let me see, make sure I haven't forgot. Oh, I want to, can I just give a shout out to our people here? Inside of the brochure, it talks about our officers. We have Don is the one that keeps us on track. He's the advisor. We have the people from the wonderful grocery store. So go in there and shop because they stayed open through COVID. So we have Priscilla and Eric. We have the three Bs. We have Lisa there, Lisa Green. And we have Shannon and Dale are both from construction. They are the contractors that do the, the dirty work, you know, hammering the nails. And we have had, oh, Gino, he's our go-to person because everybody goes into Mail Mart to find out what's going on. So anyway, we're so glad that he is part of what we're doing, and we've had a lot of support, and I hope I'm not forgetting anybody in that process. But, so, we are here to make a difference, to be here for a long time, and we want to have an, I have an ask. We're going to need the money to hire a director. So that's the position we're in right now. And I checked with Colton and Loma Linda, similar sizes to us, maybe a little bit bigger. And they, the city helps them with $25,000 each of them. And so I thought, I'm going to come and be brave. I did pull up my big girl pants, and I'm here to ask for some dollars. So I'm going to ask you to think about $18,000 would hire us a director that would help us go forward and be sustainable so that we don't make a dive again and that we can then be capable of supporting the community. And we're here doing, already doing a lot of things. We've, we're doing ribbon cuttings. We plan to do something on Blue Mountain with some music, having like the Dance Under the Stars Highlands doing. We're going to do something with the blues and music with Blue Mountain. We've got a lot of things going to bring attention to Grand Terrace. This is a special place, and that Blue Mountain has been special to me since I've been a little girl, and I can see it out my, my front window every day. So that's what we're here to do. We're happy and appreciate the time. That's it.
Well, thank you, Ms. Cooley. I mean, we're right in the middle of budget negotiations, so you're welcome to come and help us find some money. But, you know, does the council have anything they would like to say? Councilmember Allen?
So as many of you know, I've long been a strong advocate for a Chamber of Commerce, and I have long questioned, you know, why, you know, about it and pushed for the reestablishment because I'm a firm believer in, in capitalism and how I really like the idea of tax dollars, sales tax dollars, supporting our city, you know, and people coming in and doing shopping and, and people from out of town coming in and staying in our hotels, all that stuff, you know? And I'm just so thankful that we have somebody as dynamic as Claudia Cooley to grab that bull by the horns and try to rodeo it into town. Thank you, Claudia.
Councilman Henderson?
Again, I'd like to echo Councilmember Allen's comments. Those of you who know me know that I spent roughly 37 years in my public sector career with about 30 of those years responsible for economic development in the cities that I worked in, about five different cities here in the island empire. And I will tell you that the most successful programs that I was personally involved in always involved a strong presence from the Chamber of Commerce. They were a significant part of our business attraction program because when we invited new business prospects to expand or relocate to the cities I worked in, oftentimes the first question they wanted to, to have addressed was, can we meet with your chamber? Without you present, can we meet with your chamber? And so an effective Chamber of Commerce for business attraction and business retention is, is what we need. Earlier in the workshop we just had on the budget, the city manager blithely said, not blithely, but said, we're in a grow or die situation. We need to grow to continue to sustain ourselves and to make Grand Terrace what we all are here to enjoy. So I'm, I'm happy that you're here. I'm happy that Claudia is at the, at the reins, and the mayor said it, we're involved in business, excuse me, in budget deliberations, so might behoove you to stick around. Thank you.
Yes, we wish nothing but success for you guys. You know, I've been to those, some of those meetings, and I see, you know, we want to make this successful because, you know, you guys are the driving force, you know, you're, like Councilmember Henderson said, they want to meet with the chamber. And I believe the chamber history serves me right, was the driving force to make this a city. So we had to keep that up. You're the grunts, as we say in the Marine Corps. Your boots on the ground. You're the ones going to go out there and do that. And I was told it was, I guess last week was recognition for Small Business Week, and my wife, who's here, she's been supporting your businesses, and she keeps spending our money. So, you know, every one I'm looking at, I think we spend money at your store. So, but anyway, we appreciate everything you guys are doing. And, you know, I thank the city staff for helping the chamber, you know, making their copies and, you know, and I know Conrad gave you a little spot up there so you have a phone. I mean, you can have my office too if you want, you know? But you just have to redecorate. I don't think it's been redecorated since the city incorporated, so. But we're here for you, and, you know, just stick around for the negotiations and the budget and stuff and see what's going on. And we need to succeed in bringing up businesses, and we need to succeed in taking care of our businesses that we have. And that's how this city's going to stay alive, and that's how it's going to thrive, and, you know, the correct growth and just, you know, so future generations can enjoy it. And so that way, they'll be up here one day, well, the chamber was started in 2023 or 2022, and it hasn't stopped. We don't want to hear, oh, wait, to restart again. All right? So thank you again, you know, for all your hard work, and, you know, you're welcome to come here anytime, but we really appreciate it. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you, sir.
The following consent counter items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be acted upon in the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizens may request to remove an item from the consent counter for discussions. Do we have any removals?
Not from us.
Council, would you like to remove or talk about anything? All right, well, no removals or nothing. Looking for a motion for item one through seven.
I'll move the consent calendar, Mayor. I'll second.
All right, so we have a first by Councilmember Allen and a second by Councilmember Henderson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Public comment is the next one. Is this opportunity for members of the public to comment on any item not appearing on the regular agenda? Because restrictions contained in California law, the city council may discuss, may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to the statement made or ask questions for clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff to, to questions raised above the public comment or may request the matter to be agendized for future meetings. M C clerk, we have a public comment?
Yes, we have Frank Audi.
Frank, come to the podium, please.
My name is Frank, last name is Audi. I'm an engineer and I run, I have, I'm licensed contractor for refrigeration and air conditioning. However, I just have a story to share with you guys. The first time I voted was for President Carter, and I was disappointed because he lost. But I admire him because once he leave office, he said, I left the presidency to a higher position, which is the citizen of the United States. I think as long as, you know, we appreciate that, you know? So now I gotta get to my point here. I've been running my business across the freeway at La Crosse for almost about 10 years, and then every time I get invitation here from Grand Terrace to come to the meeting to just, you know, come to the chamber, their chamber, you know? So I moved here. I thought this is the best city ever because Colton is not a good place. So that reminds me when somebody, he want to befriend his wife to start with, and then he give her everything, and then when they get married, they start fighting. So when I moved here, it was so nice because, you know, I didn't have no relationship, but I missed the invitation from the city that comes to the other, to the Colton, the city of Colton. And after that, I get my first fight, you know? There is a lady, she was like code enforcement, and I was surprised. She came in to the other side. I do business here and what, you know, it's across the street from Stetter Brothers. So she came in and was, you know, I was there late, so came in late, and she was attacking me, you know, for no reason at all. Anyway, okay. Anyway, so I just, you know, came, I complained about her to the, to the nice city mayor, which, which was the lady. But now I get, I get a ticket here. When I came back, I was in Detroit, you know, for some special business. I get here, a ticket says danger, and when I see the ticket, the danger sticker, it go ahead. Okay. When I see the ticket, I was scared, you know? I opened the door and the ticket fall in front of me. And the worst thing it says that city will shut business operation down. And I was looking through the, the ticket to see that the guy didn't have a code, except the code doesn't say anything about shut me down or shut me, you know? We never been, we, we've been here for six years. We never have any handout or any help even from the city, which may be like it's our fault or the city fault, something else. So to receive this notice, you know, that remind me, you know, we're not here in the military, you know, for the city. We, we're here looking for nice and easy and gentle relationship. So that was my point, and, you know, I hope I get it across.
Okay. No, we understand. Frank, what we're going to do, we have your information, and we'll have the city manager reach out to you and see if we can give you guidance or take care of this issue, okay?
Thank you very much.
Conrad's going to get with you on that. Thank you, sir, for coming out tonight and speaking. Right here, the city manager. Thank you, sir, for coming out and speaking. M C clerk, do we have any other public comments?
Yes, Juanita Odenbaum, I'm sorry, it's Virginia Fernandez or Juanita?
Correct, Virginia Fernandez.
Virginia Fernandez.
Good evening.
My name is Virginia Fernandez, as you all know, but I've been a resident of Grand Terrace since before it became a city. In fact, I think I bought our home in 1968. I raised six children, which is located behind the old State of Brazil warehouse. And I also worked at State of Brother Warehouse for about 28 years. Unfortunately, I was the first Hispanic woman that had to file charges with a state board discrimination and the federal level of it just to get a job and become a teamster and work side by side by men. So I'm very proud of that because, like I said, there had been three women working there, white women, but I, they wouldn't let me go full-time. But anyways, that's not what I'm here, I don't know how I got into that subject. The reason I'm here is I came early this morning to the city to get my dog tags license renewed, and I remember that I had been here in January and February, and I had filed some paperwork regarding some potholes in my neighborhood that needed to be addressed by the city because as far as I could see, it was on the city responsibility to fix those potholes. And because of the heavy rains from January all the way through what this last past month, it hadn't been done, and I understand. But I brought the subject up again, and also a street light that was in Grand Terrace Road and Grand Vista Way that has been off for several, several months. And I had told the young lady also to write that up, that needed to be fixed. I was under the impression after I came the second month that it was already fixed, and whether if it was fixed or not, I really can't, you know, swear to it because I went by there about a week and a half ago in the evening, and the light was off. And I noticed that the house that's on that area right there has all kinds of like Christmas lights on, and I'm assuming they have them on because of that darkness in that area that's there. But anyways, I went ahead and I had help with the young lady that, I paid the dog fees for my dog, and she wrote all that information down. And about 3:22 this afternoon, I got a call, I'm sorry, saying that they, that the pothole was fixed. And I said, oh, really? I didn't know. I thought it was still. So anyways, to make a long story short, I went over there and checked it out, and as far I could see, that it has not been done. But she said that she had got the work order that it had been done. So that's where I'm at. And one of the most important things that I just want to close with is we need more police force sheriffs out there in our area. We're getting our mailboxes damaged. We're getting business broken into. The West Coast Arborus has been broken into twice. I almost caught the people, and my daughter got upset with me because she said, Mom, that's, you needed to leave it to the sheriff. It's not your job to be chasing anybody or try to get the, you know? So I said, okay, I will leave it alone. But I'm going to be very honest with you. If I see somebody that's suspicious in my neighborhood, I will get their license and, and turn them in if I have to because it's, it's an area that's kind of separate from, I would say, the main city area, and we do have a lot of stuff going on in our area that shouldn't be going on. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Virginia. City manager, can we make sure we get the right potholes fixed on there and also check out that light that's out so they have access? And let me know what it's done, please?
We could do that.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments?
Bobby Forbes.
Bobby Forbes.
Thank you, Virginia, for speaking up. We're neighbors, and we all watch out for our neighbors. We're neighbors, and we all watch out for each other in our neighborhood. I would like to bring up the graffiti in town. I've been sending photos to City Hall and to code enforcement. It's gotten really bad west of the freeway, and I don't know what can be done about it except to call. I call Colton, I send them pictures. They're hitting the lineage, formerly the Stater Brothers warehouse building really hard on the railroad track side and on the other side, actually on the building. Colton's pretty good about getting out, but they can't always see it, so I wish the citizens would notify the City Hall in Colton and Grand Terrace that it's happening. It's a big deal. Regarding streetlights, there's one on Commerce Way just past the skating rink that's been out for years. It blinks and blinks and blinks and blinks. I reported it to Mr. Duffy years ago, and it's still blinking. I don't know whose responsibility it is, but it would be nice if it was working properly. So there's graffiti, 12210, Michigan, the back wall. I know that you have written that one up. I now see the wall that's at the end of Commerce Way is now covered with graffiti. It's facing south. The old Stater Brothers warehouse has 100 feet of graffiti or more and probably 25 feet tall on the side of their building, and that's damaging, besides it is ugly and you can see it. Where they took out all the buildings just before the bridge on Barton Road between the roundabout and the first bridge on the left-hand side, there's graffiti all down in there on the wall. You see that when you come into Grand Terrace. It's just really important as the community act and tell the city. That's my plea for right now. I have others always, you know that, but this is the big one for me right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know we're working on that graffiti issue, and Conrad, if you could just follow up on that and maybe do a courtesy call with Colton, see what they're doing so we could partner with them, could do that, so we get rid of the blith. All right, any other public comments?
No, mayor.
All right, well, go ahead and close the public comment. Public hearing none, unfinished business none. New business, I had a made introduction of fiscal year 2023 and 2024 proposed budget presented by the city manager. Oh, well, you're not the city manager.
Actually, you get me. So good evening, mayor.
Good evening.
Mayor Protem and council members, Christine Clayton, Finance Director. So we are gonna go over the fiscal year 2324 budget. So our budget is in line with our 2030 vision and goals. The city of Grand Terrace, general fund revenues are projected to be 7.8 million, and expenditures are projected to be 7.8 million. There's some change in there, with a projected surplus of around $56,000. Sales tax projections from HDL are projected to be 1.2 million. Property tax projections provided to the city by HDL are 2.9 million. Our property tax VLF swap revenues are projected to be 1.6 million. The city's unfunded peris liability on June 30th, 2021 was 5.3 million. The city's unfunded peris liability on June 30th, 2022 was 3.4 million, of which the city's annual normal cost is approximately $160,000, and the UAL for fiscal year 2324 is $450,000 for an annual cost of $610,000. The city's unfunded other post-employment benefits, OPEB, on June 30th, 2021 was 1.9 million, and that same cost on June 30th, 2022 was a little over 1 million, of which the city's annual normal cost for retiree medical benefits is 600,000 per year. Total revenues for all funds is 12.3 million, and total expenditures are 12.1 for a net of $186,000. Now, the chart below shows our main expenditures year over year. We have our unfunded accrued liability, our sheriffs, our salaries, and the totals that they account for, and you can see from year to year the increases. We're lucky this year that our UAL is going down. That is rare, don't expect it every year. Normally, it's the progression you've seen from 2018 to our projection for 2023. It normally goes up, so we're getting a break this year. Our sheriff's costs year over year increase, and salaries increase year over year. So you can see these are our three main areas each year for increases. Now on to our general funds. This lists all of the revenues in the general fund. We have our adjusted budget for '21, '22, and you can see the actuals, our adjusted budget for '22, '23, our year-end projections, and our, excuse me, it should be a proposed budget for '23, '24. And at the bottom, you can see our total revenues for proposed '23, '24 is 7.8 million. And this graph represents the chunks of those revenues, and the main chunk of our revenue is property taxes at 59% and sales tax at 15.7%, and then the other little pieces that combine to make up our, our total revenue. Now, these are the general fund expenditures, and again, we have the same categories, adjusted budget, actuals for '21, '22, adjusted budget and year-end projections for '22, '23, as well as the proposed budget for '23, '24. And these are broken down into the main categories, salaries and benefits, all the way down to transfers out with total expenditures for the proposed budget of '23, '24, 7.8 million. And this just represents a graph showing those expenses. And so tonight, we're doing the budget introduction. At the next meeting on May 23rd, we will continue deliberations and hopefully adoption. If we need to go to further deliberations, we can adopt it on June 13th. Mr. City Manager, do you have comments?
You can see that we've, you know, if you go back, go back one to the, one more, one more, keep going backwards. If you look back here, you can see that we've, we've actually done really well '21, '22. We came in, you know, significantly under budget. This year, we're going to, our projections, we're gonna hit where we're supposed to. Remember, we talked earlier in the workshop about the reconciliation with Lewis where there's a pretty big revenue income, revenue increase from recapturing those expenses, which should, you know, more than offset that, the difference between the budget and year-end, which we discussed at mid-year. And then so the proposed, we've really kept our expenditures down, you know, to a very, very small percentage. You know, labor is always a big challenge. One of our challenges with labor is that, you know, it, we want longevity, we want people to be here, but that longevity costs, and to have a workforce in place costs 7% a year because every year you go up a step, and each step, each year, the steps go up 2%. So the step is 5% and then 2%. So every year somebody's here, they cost a 7% more. So given that, we've really managed to keep our, keep our expenses in line. We made, as we discussed earlier, we made a couple of assumptions on, on the property tax, on the sales tax, that we're not gonna do as well as we have in the last couple of years, that we'll look at a little, like a 2% reduction in both of those based on where the economy is now, where the housing prices are now, the, the lack of new housing sales or the transactions in the area, and also that, you know, our two, two of our largest sales tax generators are in the construction trades where the other just isn't any construction. So with this, all in all, we, you know, we've managed to, in the general fund, come up with about a $67,000 surplus. Normally, you know, a normal city manager would find something to do with that, put swings in a park or pave a road or do something as part of what we're looking for going into the future and, as we discussed at the workshop, aligning our goals and looking for the goals. I've left that, those funds unassigned and left them as a true surplus at this point so that the council can decide, do we plant trees? Do we put in a swing set? Do we pave a road? What, what are those things rather than staff and city manager kinda tuck as much money as we can away into projects? Let's bring those projects to something that we, is council-driven. There's also, I don't know if it's in your packet or did you, or is it the end of your slides?
It is not at the end of my slides. It's in their packet.
Okay, so in the packet, you can also see the, our funds besides the general fund. So those, there's an extensive list. Most of those are committed, development impact fees, of course. We have to use them for specific items and specific types of work. A lot of that money is also tied to transportation, so we can only use that for roads, sidewalks, some street beautification, planting trees. Some of these other funds are, you know, for the work in high growth, the new construction, we received some development impact fees. Those are one-time funds, so we, we can only expend them once. We can't create new programs, but those are things, as we're looking into the, the year, we, we have the ability to tap some of those for some of the one-time activities that, that we want to do. So my suggestion would be is that we don't look at increasing law enforcement, which everybody wants, but that's a year over year, and we have to find that money every single year. But we can do other things that is a one-time expenditure that may help with the community and the safety of the community and may help law enforcement do their job. So there's kind of this balance that we're trying to do. And with that, I think I'm open, we're both open for questions.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, mayor. I think we, I think we can agree that budgets are only as good as the assumptions. So based on that, I've got a few questions, and that is, can I assume that we are what we call fully staffed, barring any unforeseen circumstances where somebody's gotta leave for some reason, or they decide to go cross-country, or fall into a crevice, or whatever?
Our budget assumes full staffing. We did not add any positions this year, and if there are vacancies, then those are obviously savings over the course of the year. If somebody leaves and it takes us a month or two to replace them, then that's, that's a savings for us.
And I'm assuming also that any pre-programmed salary adjustments are accounted for as of taking a picture on this date, the effective date of the review.
They are built in. So both, as I discussed, the steps and the, what we call the creep, the annual increase are built into the, the budget.
In the property tax, the projected property tax, does that include the Wingstop improvement? Or is that excluded at this point?
At this, this year, we're not including the Wingstop and that, that, the new construction. Typically, it takes a year or so for that to hit the, the cycle. So we'll start seeing that next year once the assessed, the assessor gets, gets his fingers into it, and then we'll start seeing that come through.
We can only go better.
It can only go better, yes.
All righty. Why is, excuse me, why is the $1,200,000 realized from the one-time revenue in, shown in our general fund?
That should not be in the general fund. There should be a separate fund for the fire sta, fire station proceeds. We don't want that in general fund, and actually, over the course of the year, we're going to work to break out, I don't know, four, five, six years ago, there was some bond proceeds that became available that, see, by council action, were put into general fund. We're gonna see what was expended, do the forensic accounting, and then whatever residual is that, is create a fund for that and pull it back out.
So, okay, so I'm gonna assume it's just a placeholder?
Yeah, these, these one-time things, we don't wanna drop in general fund so that it gets diluted and we just kinda lose it in the mix.
Because as you know, I would recommend heavily that we find a placeholder for some of that in the storm drain line item that we have virtually no money for, and of course, we've got upcoming items, but that's gonna be up to the council. The franchise fee got a $42,000 bump. How did that happen? Franchise fees are usually pretty, pretty constant.
I will have to look into that and get back to you, council member Wilson.
Very good, thank you. License fees and permits, $75,000 from what? Same idea.
We're licensed fees and permits. So licenses, fees and permits is essentially permits that are not building permits, encroachment permits, those types of things, any type of dog licenses, code enforcement citations, all that kind of stuff that all is, is just fees and charges.
It's a lot of dog licenses.
It's, well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of pieces in there, but yes, it's a lot of dog licenses. It's the, the signs for the, the yard sale signs, it's the code enforcement citations, like I said, it's encroachment permits, it's these little bits and pieces, and bits and pieces add up to be a lot.
In particular, we've got sales tax down $23,000 from what was budgeted. What are our, what are our vendors, I mean, we have a bunch of folks here from Chamber Commerce, what are our vendors actually reporting to us? Because I'm a little bit skeptical of the footnotes, this is down below your page in the expenses, it's, I think it's page, probably around 97 or so, and it says that HDL has a sales tax projection, and that projection obviously is going up, but it doesn't seem to me that that's what we're seeing in the historical record.
So we, we contract with a company that only does sales tax, and they work with the, the state franchise board, and every, every one of the businesses here that so generously contribute to us through sales taxes, and eagerly, I'm sure. Anyway, the businesses that, that do contribute, we track every single business in the city and what their sales tax is.
Everybody but Stater Brothers.
Including, including Stater Brothers.
Oh, okay.
Which, which is a fairly substantial piece of the city's sales tax. But, and we get, we get a report on that every quarter, and then this company also gives us a projection of, based on the trends that we've seen in the past and what's, what the business trends are, what our, what our sales tax should be. We specifically took a more conservative approach than what they're, they're looking at because our two by far largest sales tax generators are construction-related, and there is, there has not been a tract house started in a year, and that's, that's those guys' bread and butter. Now, they're still doing well, probably finishing out projects and getting things over the hump, but we really see them as not, you know, taking a hit this, this year until construction picks up.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, you know, just for the education of the masses, in our expenses, which we, you have revenues, then you've got expenses, and in the salaries and benefits, there's $131,000, let's call it a credit in there. What position did we not fill in that timeframe or whatever that we realized a $131,000? Gimme.
So we had a, a assistant planner position that was not filled. We were able to work with the, the County of San Bernardino through a grant, that the county filled this position for us for several months, so the county paid for our planner. And we also didn't have weekend code enforcement for about four months, which were, and our code enforcement officer was so excited to have back. So it was, as, as your very first question, it was these vacant positions, you know, we, we budget for it fully staffed, and then when we're anything less than fully staffed, then that ends up being a savings.
This is the kind of bottom scraping that it takes to get down to the sticks and bricks of a budget. Unfortunately, what, what is often found is, is that the assumptions get blurred, and so for the benefit of the community, this is the keen kind of work that our staff does to make sure that the numbers are real, and they start out that way, and then if things take place, oftentimes one-time circumstances where a slope falls down that we didn't anticipate or whatever, we can review those things in our budget process and say, "Is that gonna happen next year?" Or, "Wait a minute, that only happened that year, and we've protected ourselves for it." If we don't get down to those bricks... If we don't get down to those bricks and sticks, down to the bare bones, everybody puts in a little dabble do ya? A little bit more, you know, well, you know, we'd like to have one more person. Or, well, we'd, we'd like to have just a little bit more, a new filing system, or whatever. And after a while, as you business owners know, you can't make the nut. It just doesn't work. And, you know, in the business that I was involved in, in construction, sometimes it would make up the difference of whether or not you picked up a project or not. Because by the time you got done adding up all those gimmies, it just didn't pencil. And so I'm really grateful to the, to the staff and the way they've been so diligent in keeping things so tight, to that they know exactly what those numbers mean. I only had a few other questions, and they're really for information only, and that is, down in the funds, because funds are always a mystery, right? And in page number, it'd be, page number 101, there's line item number 74, and I always look for the big numbers. And in this case, it's the Highway Safety Improvement Program. Where did we get $692,000? Wow, that's terrific. Is that a combination of several things, and then it's just called that? It seemed to me by the title that it was a specific thing. Well, it wasn't a grant, so we got $692,000 to the good. And I always like to operate on real numbers.
So if, you got it, or you owe me two?
I can answer part of it if you want to jump in. So that was a grant, and if memory serves me correctly, that was in 2021. And reimbursements were submitted in 2021 and 2122. This is the reserves in that account for those who are being reimbursed.
So we actually got the reimbursements then?
We did.
Terrific.
We did.
Now, see, those things can get lost. Those are the kind of items, and you know as business owners, that's the kind of stuff that if you don't have a way of tracking those kinds of things, they lay out there kind of in the weeds, and, and then never come to fruition. Number 75, emergency prep grant. I didn't see any money out there. And what I was concerned about is, I believe there was a discussion that we were going to update our emergency program. Because we have found over the last three or four years, there's a lot more to it than just earthquakes and a little bit of fire. Now, we have things like, you know, somebody decides that they're going to lead a whole bunch of people into the city and tear it down, or, or we have a COVID emergency, or other things like that. And as we update our, our actual program, it would seem to me that $29,000 ain't going to cut it. So is that something that you're waiting to see the update first and then address the num, the numbers with, you know, after that update's taken place?
This is a specific grant, and the reason it's $29,000 now is we've had the reimbursement, like we've done the one before. But this grant is specifically to disaster preparedness. So I think Michelle discussed about wrapping the trailer and the disaster computers. This year, we've put in for the grant to essentially put some storage and some shovings and cabinets in our conference room so that when there is a disaster, that we can use the conference room, my office, and the Human Resources Office as an emergency operations center.
You realize that these good folks here, that, you know, I'm talking to the audience now, these folks here have the responsibility of taking care of the rest of us if there is an emergency. I mean, they've, they've, they've dedicated themselves to that responsibility. It's, it's also our responsibility individually. But the bottom line is, is that they're, they're our first line of defense because the, the rest of our first responders are going to be very busy, more than likely. And then the last one, number 46, capital improvement streets, $524,000. Is that an amalgamation of anything? Or is that a reimbursement?
That is not. That is the proposed budget for that fund. That is for the, I want to say it's the CIP for 2023, '24. That is in, going to be in progress for next year.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any other questions? Councilmember Henderson?
In both the storm drain fund and the park fund and facilities fund, it seems like there's about $800 proposed for each of those funds. And I guess I'm wondering what we're going to accomplish with that nominal amount?
Those aren't expenditures. That's just what is in the fund.
I'm sorry, sir?
That's not an expenditure. That's just what's in the fund.
Oh, okay. All right. I misunderstood then. I'm trying to come up to speed. ARPA, are those COVID funds? A R P A?
Yes, those are the COVID funds, the COVID funds. We basically wash those funds. So they're being allocated to offset, to pay law enforcement. And then our savings from law enforcement, that's what we're using to pave our streets. And do, do the sign, the, the street signs.
Right.
And several other projects. So we're using those as capital funds.
CDBG COVID?
That was the, I think it was on the last agenda, where we were, we were talking about the exercise equipment.
Yes, sir. I recall now. Thank you.
That is that grant.
Yeah. My last comment or question. I didn't get the chance to review the budget as thoroughly as I would like, but I could not find an entry for meetings, conferences, travel, and whether or not it exists for the city council specifically, or whether it's a citywide fund that funds all meetings, conferences, and travel activity for city staff and council.
So each department has a budget for travel, conference, and meetings. And if I'm not mistaken, I can get back to you on this. I believe it rolls up into materials and supplies.
Okay, that's why I didn't see it.
City council does have a budget for that, though.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Allen, you have anything?
Okay. The biggest thing, and I didn't see it on here, but it's on package page 119. The Public Safety Budget General Fund. And are we putting overtime still on this budget? Are we accounting for that for later? Or hire additional officers?
So the overtime gets billed to us quarterly, and that is within these accounts, or within this schedule. If you go towards the bottom, there is overtime, and it's $209,000. That's an estimate.
Okay. All right, I missed, missed that. Then the other thing, because are we going to, is Lieutenant Lane going to talk about where this goes? Because every year, every budget, we hear about why we pay so much for the officers, and people think that we could just hire our own officers for $50,000 a year, and we'll be good. But people don't realize all the, the logistics that goes into that. So are we making a time for him to talk later on in the budget proposal on this?
We can, if you like, and that was the reason this pa, this specific page was inserted. So that it's very clear that, yes, an officer costs X number of dollars, but that officer has a long train of stuff behind him. Every guy on the street has a sergeant, has lieutenant, has a captain, has a car, has a dispatcher, has equipment, has a building, has all these, this chain that he follows behind him that costs. It's not just hiring an officer. Let Lieutenant Lane go from there and...
Love to. So every year in March or so, the cities, all the cities that have contracts with us for law enforcement are presented with their next fiscal year's budgets. And that page, which is on page 119, is exactly what the breakdown is for all of those things. During those meetings, the sheriff explains to all the city managers exactly why increases take place. That the number one reason is, generally speaking, contract raises that have been negotiated over years between the association and the county. So back in 2020, we entered into a three-year contract, which, which had annual increases for all the deputies and all the positions, all throughout the county. Last year in 20, or late 21, '22, we extended our contract at a time with the county to extend that through 2025. And as a result of that, there were additional increases. Now, you don't see the cumulative total of those increases in the, in just one year. They're, they're obviously all spread out. I want to say that the overall increase this year is in the area of about 4%, 4.3 maybe percent over last year, which again is represented by majority of those increases, which, which also include benefit increases and insurance costs and stuff of things like that. So a, a single deputy sheriff is actually quite costly when you take into account all of those extra benefits and factors that are included. Those, those sort of random numbers that are on there, like 5.76 deputy sheriffs, that's a calculation that's based on total hours per year. It's not actually full-time, that number's a full-time equivalent based on the number of hours that they're contracted to work in the city. So it, it takes that many people to put one deputy sheriff on the street 24/7. It's basically what that counts for. And, and with each deputy sheriff, again, is included in their menu of other services that the department provides to support that deputy. So there's office staff in there, there's equipment costs in there. Obviously, your vehicle costs are in there as well. So, so every, every year, as those costs are received by the county, of course, they're, they're pass-throughs. So the contract cities end up paying their share of those costs.
Okay, so two questions. Because I, this, like I said, we've been doing it eight years, and this is always brought up. And I know we have people in the audience who actually went out and had a petition signed for different avenues to, to get additional sheriff's protection. And it is a significant part of our budget, but it's a must-have to protect our residents and our officers. So if we were to hire another full-time officer, take away the 209,000 overtime, would that be the, another 2.4 million?
Roughly.
So we'll be looking at $5 million for two full-time officers?
Roughly. Because again, those officers will need cars, they'll need equipment. All, and again, any movement to increase any of the portions of a person that aren't indicated on here necessarily trigger increases in other areas. So if we add a deputy sheriff, we're adding another portion of a detective, another portion of a supervisor. And, and those costs are then aggregated and added into that. So it's not just as simple as taking one person and adding that cost. It triggers other costs. But, but there are things in here as well that I think the city is very, very much aware of. And that is, when things go wrong here in the city, you get a lot more of that service. And then one of the things that the cities were introduced to, which is, which is in the very near horizon, is the introduction of body-worn cameras, which we currently don't have. Those are projected to probably go into service sometime this year or this next fiscal year. As a result of this being a first-year sort of acquisition of this equipment, the county is not charging any city for the first-year service of those things. So every deputy sheriff gets a camera. There are costs associated with those cameras. But the, but the department has elected to bear the, the total cost of that for the first year and potentially into the second year, as we sort of figure our way through the use of those and, and how they all work. So they decided not to pass that, that cost back to the cities. So that's just another example of how, I think in years past, we've seen a little bit clearer where costs have been a lot more severe. But the department has, has recognized that it's important that we maintain a balance with the city, and we don't want to pass on every bit of those costs back to the cities out of fairness. So we end up taking a bunch of those costs, paying it within the department. So, you know, we try to be mindful and respectful of the city's positions as well when it comes to finances.
Okay, on the overtime, what do we get for the overtime?
So the overtime that's currently paid is 40 hours per week. That's broken down into one 10-hour position, which is a quality-of-life position, which deals specifically with homeless. So we, we, we staff generally a hope team person who spends that day, that 10-hour day here in the city, dealing with homeless issues, making contacts, investigating encampments, providing services and whatnot. The other 30 hours per week are spent on other quality-of-life issues, such as traffic, such as additional support for the other deputy sheriff that's working, or any other identified priority that the city has in terms of issues that they see that we need to address. And some of those issues may also include homelessness, traffic, things of that nature. Or if we see a particular spike in a type of crime that seems a little bit out of the norm, we can focus our efforts into, you know, combating some of those things and directing some enforcement in those directions.
Okay. Well, thank you. I know we, we keep talking about it every year, but we got to emphasize it every year, because you'll get somebody else saying, why are we paying that much? Why don't we have this much? People need to be educated, you know, and believe me, if I think of all those councilmembers, we could write another check, we would do it. But that's one of the things about growth in the city that we have to maintain to get these services. So, thank you, Lieutenant Lane. Does council have any other questions? Comments? Councilmember Henderson?
The manager had mentioned that we were going to have a workshop session on priorities. And I, I think I strongly encourage that. One of the things that I'm hopeful we can discuss as a potential priority, if not this year, in future years, is having some kind of a lobbying presence in Sacramento and in Washington DC, either on a shared basis or whatever basis that makes the most sense to us. And also identifying priorities where we can allocate monies on an annual basis for, instance, the storm drain system for City of Grand Terrace. Those of you familiar with transportation finance already know that if you have a set of plans that have been environmentally cleared, you stand a very, very good chance of getting funding from either the state government, the federal government, or both. The problem with that, most cities don't have the patience or the discipline to allocate the funds, leave the funds alone, and engage outside contractors to do the design and, and of these kinds of facilities. But if you've driven through, walked through Grand Terrace during the course of the rains that we've just had, it just, it's, it's difficult to to see what certain homeowners go through during every storm event. And it's a situation where I think, as a council, we need to look to the future, even if we have to take baby steps, so that future councils and future communities, the Grand Terrace community, can band together and identify those types of priorities, particularly with respect to the storm drain, where we have a system that can be submitted to the funding agencies for, for funding. Mr. Allen, the mayor and myself visited Sacramento recently, and we received a course on identifying funds and identifying projects early in the process. And we found out, number one, that we don't have a lobbying presence. We already knew that before we went in. And secondly, that to ask for the monies, we were already... And secondly, that to ask for the monies, we were already three months late. The ask occurred in January of this year, and we were just there two or three weeks ago. So, it's just something that I think we, as a council, should discuss. I'm not suggesting that a particular project, but the idea of setting money aside for priorities that the council will want to implement over a course, over a period of years is something that I think we should consider. One last point on that topic. The city clerk and I worked in a community where, from 1970 through 2018, there was talk about the Yucca Loma Bridge project. And it was in the Town of Apple Valley's general plan for many, many years. Nothing ever happened. Fortunately, through our relationship with former Congressman Jerry Lewis, he funded annual earmarks for that project over a period of about eight or nine years. We had a total of $13 million at the end of that process. And with that $13 million, we designed the project, and we environmentally cleared the project. So, for years, there was no hope. And all of a sudden, we received $121 million in federal and state funding for that project because we were ready, we were shelf-ready, and other jurisdictions were not. Other jurisdictions had higher priorities. So, I think we need to adopt the same or similar approach for Grand Terrace going forward. And it's up to the council to figure out what priorities deserve that kind of consideration. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Public comments?
No, Mayor.
So, this is just the introduction, so we don't need to vote on this? It's just a...
Unless you feel daring and choose to approve, adopt it, but we can bring it back next week.
I think we have some stuff to do. I like to have a, it's robust here, but, okay, so we'll just move forward on this? We don't feel that daring yet. We got to make you earn your money. It's in the budget.
It's no fun unless we do it twice.
And a public hearing. Yep. Go through the motions. All right, well, we'll close that item and requests for future agenda items by council? None? So, city council communications. Councilmember Henderson, you have any?
Briefly, I've already talked too much, but I did have a meeting with the fast-food mafia, a group of local citizens who believe that Grand Terrace is being overrun with fast-food restaurants. So, much of what we discussed tonight in the budget session and how we need to grow to provide the services, the community demands, after about an hour and a half of discussion, they decided that they weren't going to have those T-shirts that said "Fast Food Mafia" made as a part of that program. As it relates to growth in Grand Terrace, you have to crawl before you can walk, and walk before you can run. And so, we're not at the stage where we can run yet, but we're getting there. Also, attended the Wingstop grand opening. It was wonderful. Enthusiastic. According to the manager and the employees, that first week of business activity was pretty significant, so we hope that continues. And my last comment relates to a meeting I had just recently with former students of mine who were wanting to update a program at Cal State San Bernardino that I was involved in the development of. It's called PA 617, which is a graduate-level course in public administration, and it's entitled Managing Local Economic Development. So, I was involved, along with some friends of mine, who were also redevelopment, economic development directors. We developed the curriculum, and we lectured on a guest lecturer basis for a year or so until we wound up teaching the course for two or three years, until business activity where we worked, the cities and counties that we worked, didn't allow our continued participation. Anyway, there's an effort to upgrade that program and to make it more meaningful for city and county officials that are involved in economic development. And so, I look forward to working with those folks and hopefully have the kind of success that we've had in years past. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. I was, I went to the grand opening of the Wingstop there with you, Councilmember Henderson. And that was, I was glad to see that we're, you know, bringing back the ceremonial grand opening events like we used to do. We've, over the last year or two, we, a few businesses kind of opened up under the radar, and we didn't get to have the ceremony. I was glad we did that, and I look forward to more of them. So, I went to that, to the Interagency Council on Homelessness from the San Bernardino County Department, or the San Bernardino County Office of Homeless Services. Had the Interagency Council on Homelessness. If you remember, we, this is the first meeting we've attended. They happen every month, but I guess we were either asked to, or we asked to be a part of that, or they asked us. I'm not sure how the invitation occurred, but I went to it. And I'm not exactly sure if that's the place for us, but I also went later on to that steering, the Central Valley Steering Committee, and that would be. And they were very excited that a municipality, a city, wanted to step up and participate in that. I mean, other than the big ones like San Bernardino, and they, we are represented there by them, but there are more seats on that committee. I think there's 19 seats, so they have some openings for city representation. So, we may expect to see an invitation for that more. But my takeaway from the interagency one was mostly had to do with, that particular meeting had to do with funding. And a lot of the boots-on-the-ground folks, the nonprofits, because this is an organization that tries to provide funding for those nonprofits that are out there on the, trying to perform the functions, you know, trying to get the people off the streets. And some of those representatives of those organizations were there, and there was discussions about funding and transparency and better communications between the county and the organizations seeking the funding. A lot of the, I detected that the issues that those organizations were having with their funding sources at the county were sort of like what we were dealing with in Sacramento. You know, they were finding out a day late and a dollar short where they should have been last week, you know, because there's a lack of effective communication, and they were working. So, they did say, the county said they were going to really work hard to improve that. And then, the steering committee was, the meeting that I went to, it almost seemed like they were trying to get something off the ground. And so, I think by next month's meeting, we'll have a better feel for what their goals and objectives and our purpose for that meeting will be. But it's a more localized response to homelessness because there's the Mountain Region, there's the East Valley, West Valley, and Central Valley steering committees. And so, we're in the Central Valley, so that's the committee that we'll sit on. And but, so I'll let you know more from the next meeting I go to next month.
Well, thank you. I mean, we definitely need to be proactive on the homelessness. And I know when I used to go, they had it on Zoom, and it was hard to do. But we need to get every bit of support and resources we can. So, thank you, Councilmember Allen, for going. April 10, you have anything?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to apologize for my absences. At a, I guess, I didn't realize I had a major operation back on January 27th, and the recovery has been a little bit longer than I would have anticipated. And I've learned a little bit about the nervous system and some other things. But I believe I'm in the process of a real recovery, slowly but surely, and just have to kind of work around things. And I appreciate my colleagues, you know, stepping in and helping out. And I, you know, I take this opportunity, serving as a city councilperson and as a mayor pro tem, very seriously. And everybody at the Fontana Kaiser Permanente knows that as well. So, hopefully, within the next few months here, it'll create a solution, and we'll, and I'll be back to what I'd consider normal for a almost 70-year-old guy. So, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Allen.
Yeah, I don't mean to go out of turn, but I did forget one quick thing I wanted to tell you guys about is I learned about at the steering committee, or at the interagency committee, because I met with the sheriff's official, who is over the entire Hope program, all three of them. And there was also a DBH individual there, and I learned about the Inroads program. Inroads, I don't know if it's going to replace Hope, but it's sort of, it adds a DBH professional to a Hope-type team to respond to mental health homeless crises. And I thought that was an outstanding move on the part of the county. And I'd like to commend the organizations for doing that. And I look forward to, well, hopefully, we won't need them here, but, you know, I'm glad they're doing it. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, Mayor Pro Tem, our prayers were answered for you. I know our men's group was praying for you, so continue to pray for your recovery and, you know, welcome back. And, you know, like tonight, you didn't skip a beat. You know, we look forward to your experience and your knowledge, so thank you for coming back. But just remember, you know, health is important. And we're here to cover each other, to here to help each other, all right? So, the Wingstop, you know, they moved it so I could attend because I was going to have Councilmember Allen and Councilmember Henderson, who are vegetarians, and I didn't think it was going to work. So, I tried to get them to eat a wing, and they wouldn't do it. And I told them it was a carrot, it's beyond meat, but they still wouldn't do it. So, I had to eat their share of wings, so. So, when I go on meetings with these guys, they're eating nice Greek salads and stuff, and I'm eating bacon, but I don't feel bad about it. But it was a great ceremony, and thank you, Chamber, for coming out, and hopefully, we'll do additional ones. And it was exciting to see a business come in, and I know we have more. And it's, like I said, it's exciting for the businesses that are here. You know, everyone that, you know, we're still walking around and meeting them. And I'd like every council member to go around to each businesses and, you know, just say hi. You know, just introduce yourself and stuff, and that's who we're here for, besides the residents. I don't know about that T-shirt thing that you were talking about, but I did hear the same thing, is like, what are you putting this in there? Was it telling the kids for fast food? Don't let your kid go. I don't know what to tell you, but I like fast food. I grew up on fast food, and I'm pretty healthy, I guess. I don't know. Anyway, the art show, you know, thank you, guys, for the art show, talent. I always walk out of the art show knowing I can't draw a stick man, so. But I think you guys had a good turnout. And I went in there, and they wanted me to model for their next painting next year, so. I told the canvas wasn't big enough, so I couldn't do it, so. But, you know, thank you for putting that on and bringing stuff to the community. You know, it's always fun to have community events like that. And seeing the young kids, too, you know, the talent that they have, it just amazes me. And my son, he was an artist, well, he still is, but you can't get him to draw anything. He draws on himself, but, you know. It's just amazing how the kids will do that, and the adults do it. And just, it's, it's an art, and it's a lost art. You know, people, everything's graphic, but doing it pencil and stuff is just beautiful. Myself and Councilmember Allen, I forgot to mention this, we went to see another group of young talent engineers at the high school. And that was amazing. And then, I walked out of there feeling I'm not loyal, smart enough either. So, I don't know, I'm going to stop going to these events. But, you know, these kids were inventing all these things, and, you know, find your remote and to find other things. And I said, "I like to buy that because my wife always loses her glasses and her cellphone, and she's always wanting me to find it." But you just push a button, and you find all this stuff. But it was really neat, and the kids, hopefully, we invited them to come and do some, you know, presentations here, and we could recognize them, to help them, you know, further their career and stuff. So, hopefully, they'll get with the city clerk and... And today, I, you know, thanks for Captain Avril, you know, for the Stop the Bleed program. It was two hours, interesting thing, you know, he put on the how to stop the bleed, to put a tourniquet in the right way. And a lot of things changed since I was at the Marine Corps, where you put the tourniquet. And he did talk about the tourniquets were the last resort, and they're taboo and stuff. You didn't do that. But it was really interesting, and he even said that, you know, you could buy those tourniquets, and they're really neat online to have. And he taught his kids that. So, you know, just to stop the bleed, you know, might save a life, you know, just doing that. And then, the gauze, putting the gauze in the open wounds and learning to tie a knot on that gauze and, you know, finding the pulse. It was really interesting. So, you know, hopefully, we could do that maybe for the public, too, you know, have a, I know Councilmember Allen mentioned it, but really good, informative, you know. But I know the rest of the staff will be doing it. And another thing, I, trouble seeing, somebody told me that they're having issues here, and they come to the city, and they complain because they read something on 92313. That is not an official site. I know Councilmember Allen talked about Instagram and stuff like that, but it's not an official city Facebook site. And if you have issues, yes, please come to the city, but that's not set in stone, all right? I know how things get passed around and stuff. And last but not least, because I attended the SCAG, I was the alternate for Mayor Pro Tem here, and, you know, thank you, it was a nice hotel, so thanks for not going, you know, but anyway. And they did have bacon there, but it was a good event, very informative. The budget was passed for SCAG. SCAG is the Southern California Associated Governments. So, it's, so we won't be forgot about down here. I know we're in the League of Cities, which covers the whole state, but we also need a voice down here in Southern California because sometimes they forget about us down here. So, it's a group of all cities, and it's a good networking. And, you know, they have some good agendas, the counties on there, too. We had an assembly member from the New 47 District out in Palm Desert was talking. He's a GOP Republican. There's 16 seats Republican and 63 Democrats, so he's a supermajority minority. And so, he just talked about, but, you know, every city has the same issues: homelessness, budgets, police. So, we might have a small issue, but, you know, it's large for us. We get two or three homeless people here, and it's, you know, we only had one forever. You know, we don't know who that gentleman is, and he doesn't bother anybody. He still goes around, and he won't take anything he wants to work for his money. But, you know, I mean, even going to Wingstop, and I'm on the Omni Board, I've seen one get off the bus. And you can't discriminate against anybody who wants to travel, and you can't be like that. But there are resources to help. We have been going to the residents, I mean, to the businesses to help them. And one person said, "Well, I'm sad because I had to call the Hope program and the sheriff." So, don't be sad, be mad because the two people that they called on were offered a whole new way of life, and they don't want to do it. So, until, I think, until it's mandatory, until the courts step in, and I know there's a lot of different places out there that don't want to do that, but I think until we get this mental health done and mandatory, you know, programs, like when Proposition 47 took that away for the drug classes, we're going to have these issues. So, you, the residents, you, the voters, are the ones that have to make your voice heard on this to your assembly people. Enough is enough, and, you know, we got to make this back to the golden state that it once was. And we got to stop this, and we have to do everything we can. Like, my colleagues here, when we were up there in Sacramento, we had to be the voice, but we had to be a respectful voice to get it done. So, anyway, that's what's on Southern California Associated Governments, you know. One, it's not just one voice, it's a group of voices. And so, that's all I have for that. I know you guys are glad. So, city manager, communications?
Yeah, we're, have a lot going on here in the next month. We're going to do everything possible to gridlock the traffic in the city. We have construction, street construction going on on Pico, Van Buren, Big Chunks of Michigan, Vivienda, Lockadina, Palm. And then, we're going to try and pick up a couple of spots if we can manage that on some of these sections that are washed out. I think we have a section on observation, a couple of other pieces we'll try and pick up. So, anyplace we can impact traffic and make your life miserable, we'll be doing that for the next month. And then, we'll also be doing the storm drain across Mount Vernon and Van Buren, so we'll hit your traffic there, too. But hopefully... But hopefully, in this, we'll be doing things that will improve the infrastructure of the city. And, you know, as Councilman Henderson said earlier, this is, this is the phase in a community where we lay the groundwork for the people that are going to follow us. I know that in my career, I'm not going to see all the things I want to see done here. But if we lay the groundwork and we do these things now, make sure we have good streets, invest in our infrastructure, invest in what we need to have, then 10 or 15 or 20 years from now, it will make life so much easier for those that follow us. And thank you.
Thank you, city manager, and thank you for looking into those issues that the residents brought forward. I appreciate it, and I know potholes are going to be an ongoing job, but, you know, the lights and then the light that, obviously, is probably just a ballast out on that thing, but, you know, we don't know until. But I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, taking away from their busy schedule. And we're going to close this meeting in memory of Ann Wade Horsby, you know, longtime resident, and prayers for her family for comfort when they go through this. But the next regular city council meeting will be held Tuesday, May 23, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to speak on an item be placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office and requests to be processed in accordance with city council procedures. So thank you, everybody, for coming out. God bless and have a good, great week.